Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this special call meeting of B County Commissioners' Court. Today is Monday, January 22nd, 2024. The time is 9:05 a.m. We are physically located at the B County Courthouse Commissioners' Court for number 110-105-1012. This is your TV bill taxes 78102. That was agenda item number one. The call for everybody please stand and join Commissioner Lenny and Ray Carey.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to wake up another day. Dear Lord, thank you for the rain you have given us, much needed. Dear Lord, we ask that you be with each and every one of us throughout the day in this court that we make the right decisions for this town, the community, the county, and watch over everyone out there traveling their roads, keep them safe from harm, dear Lord. We have this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
No, I didn't. I'm sorry, I laughed a little bit during the pledge of allegiance, but it's because when we got to the indivisible part, in my mind, I was saying indisputable. And then so then I got into like a, it was like a boxing match, you know, the indisputable champ of the world. And I don't know, maybe we ought to suggest to change the pledge to something that has a little bit more, you know, passion on. All right, moving on. Agenda item number four, recognition of visitors. If there's anybody out there that would like to identify themselves, now is the time to do so. This isn't public comment, but if you just want to get your name on the record that you're here, please do so now. Is there anybody that likes to identify themselves? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Audrey Amitas. I live in Precinct Green.
Good morning, Mrs. Amitas. Thank you for being here and please keep coming back. Anybody else? Thank you all for being here. And so we will move on. Agenda item number five, Commissioners' Court opening remarks. Commissioner Oliveris, you may go first.
Good morning. Good morning. It's been a little bit slow, but we did get, managed to get a few things done. First of all, I'd like to start off a little bit of recognition. I'd like to recognize Robert Gonzalez for his service to the county. Sounds like he's been with us for quite some time and had a long, good record as far as his accomplishments. So a great, hope he continues to enjoy his endeavors. Also like to recognize the law enforcement, first responders, emergency responders, firefighters, constable, and others. You know, one of the things I continue to realize is how great job these guys are doing to responding to different events that occur in our small community. You just never know what situation they're going to roll upon and what they're going to have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. Pretty amazing. So to kind of give you a little bit of an example of that, this past week, we had an unfortunate event where we had, we had a fatality that occurred in South Creek County that was involved with four young individuals. Very unfortunate situation. However, the good part is to have an opportunity to work alongside here Chief Deputy Ronnie Jones, Holly Ramirez, and Jesse Garcia, and just helping where I can, mainly around traffic control. What was pretty amazing to me is, you know, trying to redirect traffic and dealing with so many people coming upon the incident, some of the attitudes and some of the responses were pretty amazing. And probably best, I'd just leave it at that rather than get into kind of detail, but Chief, you did a great job with some of those comments. It was, you had to see it to believe it. So thank you all for what you do. Also, I'd like to recognize Ryan Gowers for keeping us up with all these weather conditions. I think it's pretty important because sometimes we get tied up in day-to-day life and forget about what the weather's really doing like today, you know, a lot of rain coming through. Also like to recognize Chief Deputy for making good use of the new scanner that we got. It's good to know that the equipment that the county is providing is getting quickly good use. They were able to intervene two individuals that are trying to bring contraband into our facilities. So pretty awesome that we're able to do things like that. Sometimes little small things go a long way, so good. So cover just some general information. Thanks to Commissioner Fajias. He was unavailable at dance or actually participate in a IT meeting that was held by our engineers. And one of the challenges that we had in there, we were waiting on kind of a load study to determine if the generate, temporary generator that we have, what is the actual load on it? AEP is waiting on affirmation to determine, you know, do we have enough power going to the pole? If we're going to have to do any mitigation for that. So really good learnings. The good part for me is I got to see how passionate some of your employees can get when things don't go right with their projects. So pretty good to see, you know, so excited about that. Anyhow, I, being there, got the activity engaged and participate. So I took a bunch of meeting notes and submitted them to all the parties that were involved with some detailed action items for them to come back with this work delivery, turn them over to our engineering group to make those available. So today we're out here, whether our temporary generator is sufficient or modification that has to be done to it. And I spelled all that out in the meeting notes. So hopefully we'll hear something. Commissioner, I don't know if you heard anything back?
No, not yet.
Okay. So more to come, more to come. Also had the ability to attend a meeting that was facilitated by Councilman Benny Quintus and to hear some of the challenges that some of our contractors within the city and also county are having challenges on getting work permits or getting work done within the county. Really good session, a lot of contractors showed up, good to hear from all of them, you know, how they, how they needing some support. Next month, I'll be attending a pipeline training seminar that should be held on February 22nd. The good part of that, you know, because I had the opportunity to deal with an emergency. My first week in office last year was some malspills and I wanted to better understand, you know, what medications we had in place and then something moved to happen. So also I'd like to encourage everyone that this coming weeks, we have a livestock show. You know, if you could, support, you know, 10 and support those kids for doing a, doing good work. So please attend. In Skidmore, received several calls concerning dogs chasing livestock. So had some great conversations with the residents, had two calls. Unfortunately, I explained to them the situation of living in an unincorporated county. So maybe we might hear a little bit more about that in short upcoming days here. So interesting piece for me. So but anyhow, we did have a discussion on how, you know, that we're going to take appropriate action to help mitigate the situation. So good, good luck. Also had a, now with John Isagiri, our maintenance manager here, and we had put in some new IT equipment there and we both worked on it together, make sure we're in. It's amazing, some of the things that we do as commissioners, you know, had an opportunity at JP's office, had several people look at a leaky toilet, water was running, water bills were getting pretty high. So I went and had to put my plumber's hat on and I got there and was able to fix the problem. It was an easy one, but sometimes you've got to get your hands a little dirty here to help out the county.
Fix it yourself?
I'll fix it myself.
All right. So any other commissioner have any plumbing issues in their precincts? You know, call.
That's it, just give me a call. So but it was, it was pretty good. So it's all fixed and we're going to save the county some water bills. So that's a good part there. Had several, again, calls and still working on this, on a lot of concerns within the community, both in Skidmore and in Tynan. I will continue working with Tech Stop to try and bring some resolution to this, you know, we're working on it. To date, I've not had any action from Tech Stop on many of the safety issues that we met a couple of months ago. So I will continue to follow up with them and try to figure out how we do that. And also I'll be working with Madam Auditor's team here on the light to see what can be done. And I know Commissioner, you were helpful about a year ago, giving some information on the light situation, so thank you for that. We appreciate that. Also at Tynan Water, things are going well with that project. I also assisted them with the water leak, just happened to be on the spot. They were having a massive water leak and one of our board members there, she was doing her hardest of shoveling her hand and boots on and upturned knees in water, so couldn't let her mess along, so had to provide anything.
Did you fix it?
Plumbing and me, we were able to help mitigate that. So sometimes you've got to do different things outside of your.
This is good to know. Putting the rest of us to shame.
Can't work too.
Yeah.
Depending on what it is, but you know, the problem with mechanic, I used to do all the work myself, but now with the new technology, you don't know if it's a little simple sensor or if it's a fuel filter that you need to change, so it's difficult. So now unfortunately enough, I can bring it to someone who fixes it.
At Roden Bridge, start bringing either of you.
Yeah. So helpful with it there. And with that, I'll use the rest of my time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. It's passed two weeks, real busy. So I'll begin with BDA. We had a meeting out there. We had a new contractor come out and wanted to bring in his company in, is also bringing in some, looking at bringing in some smaller planes and things like that to house out there in East B County as a hub. And I went to Austin to the Jail Commission Standards Advisory Board, the Sub-Tact Association of Counties have me put on that board. So I'm, one of the two commissioners is on that board for representative state. And so we take a look at all the new rules coming up and tweak those and whatever. And then this week they meet and they, our, you know, our suggestions go up to the big board in Austin and they go from there. And then we had also had our first meeting for the South Texas Judges and Commissioners, and that was setting the location, which is South Padre Island, and the hotels and starting to set the education curriculum, you know, so all the new changes that happen through legislation, stuff like that, so we can cover all the things that need to be covered for the rural counties and for the big counties. So that was a, that was a pretty big meeting there. Blanconia update, okay. They've got Blanconia, they've got the forest board, the plastics down, the rebar is set up, and they're waiting to pour concrete. It's supposed to be this Thursday. So have foundation, steel arrived. The steel is there, it can arrive Friday, so you know, after six years, that's moving on pretty fast, huh? You know, it's taking a little while. And then on the courthouse generator, the generator should arrive on the 13th. And the contractors, I got to talk to the contractors here, and they were having a little bit of problems because they have all this, they have sewer, they have conduit lines and everything they run under. And when they do the 811, 811 only does by the roadside, they don't do into the property that far. So they had to have somebody separate come out, check it all out. And now that they, they had to go back and re-engineer to the piers because they were in the way of the cleanouts. And so that's all taken care of. And then the local contractor, Ambi, is going to pour the concrete as soon as the rain lets up. So that's moving forward. As soon as they pour the concrete, generator arrives, they set it on there, and then be another, a little bit before they hook it up. But it's also coming, coming in pretty quick. Had several calls. I had a Blanconia, no, not Blanconia, Car Road, and had some calls there. I called Jesse at Roden Bridge, and I think he's got it on the list to take care of some of the eating away stuff on the side of the road. And then Depp Smith Road, and they also took care of some issues out there, but those are already taken care of, I know for sure. So I want to thank Roden Bridge, appreciate Molly for guiding them. And then the trash situation at Windy Hills, the gentleman that's out there has been served with an eviction notice, and he has 60 days to clean it up. So from the time he was served to the end of the 60 days, we're just sitting on hold waiting to see what he's going to do. After that, after the 60 days, go to the next step. But we'll see what happens. That's the kind of. I want to encourage everybody to go out and, and go out to the Coliseum to support the kids for the Junior Livestock, and that's coming up all this week. So with that, I'll pass my time.
All right.
I don't have near the detailed report these two gentlemen have, but I have a few basics.
Just fill in some.
We learn from the best. There you go. Rainfall report, north of Beeville, about 3.5 inches, the Skidmore area, 3.8. That's, seems to be pretty gentle around the county, so thank you for the rain. I know the farmers need the deep moisture going in the spring. If they got this down there and came off it own, let's call it kind of slow, most of it probably did not run off, but went in the ground. That's good, it'll give them a good foundation to put the corn stuff in before long. Something that all of you that are landowners are receiving, getting letters from their appraisal office, and they look like this, they're an application for 1D1 open space agriculture use appraisal. Fill them out and send them in. What they are is your ag designation and your wildlife designation. You've got to do this or you'll lose it. I've had people from the north part of B County come in, why am I getting this from the appraisal office? Well, they do this periodically to keep their records up to date because sometimes land will sell, people aren't raising cattle anymore, maybe they put houses under something, so they have to keep it up to date. Keep in mind, this isn't a local farm, this is a comptroller farm. And by law, they have to do this. So when you get this form, fill it out completely, check every box. If it doesn't apply, put NA in it, but fill it out and get it in. It's kind of like the IRS. Don't mess with them because they're going to get in your pocketbook if you do. Fill it out, get it back in. Normally on a agricultural designation, it's about every eight to 10 years. Wildlife designation, from what they told me, is yearly. You have to do this yearly for wildlife designation. So when you get these forms in the mail, don't just put them on the side and not do anything with them. I learned a long time ago, I get something like this, I fill it out that day, and then I hand carry it in. Don't mail it in, don't send it with friends or whoever. Take it down there and take a copy with you and have them stamp the date, your copy, because sometimes these things get lost. Had a cousin, his got lost. His appraisal went way up on some farm that's out at Tynan, and they, he needed about $8,000 for taxes. He said, wait a minute, what happened to my ag designation? They had never received it. He had his copy, he went down there, he said, look, here it is. Oh, okay, we took care of it. So don't just throw away. Take them seriously. Okay, let's talk about dogs. My wife and I were in Water Burger yesterday, and the gentleman comes up and says, man, I got a dog problem. Can you mind go to Loma Linda? And there's a big German Shepherd dog, person over here, and he's chasing people. And German Shepherd, you know, is a pretty big dog, and he wants to know what to do. He's talked to the SO, they've given him some things to do. I gave him Mr. Greto's phone number and said, that's the right place to go. He knows exactly what to do. But here, here's what I used to do when I was in that position. Because what you get into, what happens to a person, man, I don't have a fence, and I have to let my dog out. Well, sir, do you realize the liability that you're creating for yourself if that dog bites somebody? Usually, I found that if we tie liability to the dog, they find a way not to let the dog out all the time. Okay, how do you do this? Number one, if the dog does bite someone, now do they have rabies shot? If they don't have a rabies shot, it's mandatory quarantine, it's going to cost hundreds of dollars because that's going to a certain type of facility that is set up for that. Not all the vets are set up. That landowner, that dog owner has to pay for that. Okay, let's say it does have the rabies shots, that's great. Then it's up to the rabies control officer, will they home quarantine, or he can still say he needs to go on quarantine. And the landowner or the dog owner is going to say, man, I can't afford to put a fence up, I can't do anything, he's my favorite dog. Well, and I really hate doing this, but y'all have heard of the shock collar? You can put a shock collar on it, it'll only let them go so far, you can put it 20 feet, 50 feet, 100 feet. And when they get outside of that perimeter, it shocks them and they come back. My next door neighbor has a shock collar. I hate them because of what it does to the dog at first, because it really hurts. But it's better to create a little discomfort for the dog than it is them to bite somebody, them wind up in the hospital with stitches and one thing and another. But the way I used to handle it, and it was, it worked every time, Mr. Jones, Mr. Smith, people have complained about your dog, you need to do something to this dog because you now have incurred a liability. And the person that owns the dog is an elected official, not a county elected official, but they are elected official in this county, and that's not going to be good if the governor's for it. So I know you're on top of it, I gave them that information yesterday, he probably already called you this morning. And I know you'll, you'll do what you can. Now, dogs. On Commissioner Oliveris's comment about they're chasing animals and it's a pack. Okay, state law says you can protect yourself or your animals from, they call them deprecating dogs. That means you can dispatch them, you can dispatch them, get rid of them.
On your dogs.
On your property only. Don't, don't go running around the road, shouldn't have them off the road.
Yeah.
On your property. They're in your backyard chasing your calves, that's your property. If you know it's your neighbor's dog, I would recommend you go talk to your neighbor first, say, hey, you know what? Look what your dog's doing. And, and let them know about the liability they're incurred. Usually when you say liability and lawsuit and all that kind of good stuff, you could lose your house, you could lose your income, it gets there a tendency. We had a situation years ago in Pettus where we had a pack of dogs that was chasing the kids at school. And it's been so long ago that I can talk about it now. We had a constable, he's, he's gone on to the big constable house in the sky, and he said, don't worry about those dogs, I'll take care of them. Well, they disappeared. They disappeared. And no more dog problem. But they were wild dogs, and they were literally chasing the kids, you may have been wondering where that happened. And they were chasing the kids at school, the kids were running like crazy, get away from the dogs.
We had better attend to some of the dogs than we did the kids.
But, but that constable took care of the dogs. So with that note, unless there's any questions, I will pass to my right, sir.
Thank you. I don't have any comments about dogs, but anyway, I spoke with the representative from the New Ways River Authority on the needs of the colonias in my precinct, mostly pertaining to septic tank needs and drainage issues that need to be addressed. And I guess now is the perfect time to look at the drainage issues, huh? So that's, that's in the process. Had a few questions about roads and directed them to the commissioner of that precinct. And I was asked to be the guest speaker at the Garden Club meeting, which kind of shocked me. But like, what am I supposed to talk about at a garden club, right? And they said, well, you need to talk for about 20 minutes. And I was like, oh, Lord. Well, once I got rolling, they had to cut me off, so it was, it was good.
If I did, and I got a report, you did a really good job.
I heard that too.
Thank you.
You may be regular.
Uh-oh. I want to thank John Isagiri. We had a six inch pipe in the valve that broke at the expo at the freeze, and he got on, he got onto it and got stellar plumbing, they took care of the problem. So good job, John. Speaking of the freeze, there were several people on the west side of town, their pipe broke, and they had called for assistance, and so I went and helped about three different families with some busted pipes at their house, got that done. The guys with Victory, the guys with Victory, they got most of the electrical done inside the expo. Of course, you know, we're pushing that you guys got to be out by this time because of 4H coming in and whatnot. So they got pretty much all the electrical ran inside the expo, and they were going to start the groundwork, but that'll be delayed a little bit due to the rain. So also, thank Commissioner Dewitt. I contacted Mr. Mercer about having some signage out in front of the expo, just to inform the public of what's going on. I know we've made it clear what we're doing out there and whatnot, but there's always some people drive by and see all the stuff going on, what are they doing out there? So asked me to get some signage out there. We were supposed to have the groundbreaking at 1:00, and due to the rain, I have postponed that. I think we're just going to do a ceremony at the completion of the build, which is one knows that. Attended the Crime Stoppers fundraiser, which was a successful event, once again. I want to thank everyone that reached out, shared the post, and the ones able to give. I had a lady reach out last night that had lost everything, and she had nothing. So it was amazing. I put on Facebook about this, and the response from the community was unbelievable, just I have this to give, I have this to give them, you know, it was, so I want to thank everyone that did that. And then also, I had a message to give to you guys. B County Junior Livestock Homemaker Show, like to invite the county judge, commissioners, and the public to come to the show. Today will be the judging of foods, crafts, and ag mechanics project. Wednesday, the animals all come in, and judging begins with poultry at 2:00, then the rabbits, heifers, steers, lambs, goats. On Thursday will be pigs. On Friday, the Blue Ribbon Sale is Saturday at 1:00. So anyone able to attend all that, or some of it, the Junior Homemaker's Livestock Show would really like for everyone to come out there and participate, whether it's watching or going to the sale and purchasing something, or just be out there. With that, I'll pass back to you, Judge.
Thank you all for your reports. Those are all very interesting. I don't really think Coastal Bend Council of Governments, there's nothing really substantive to update on. We're still working on finding a new executive director, and otherwise the organization's rocking along quite nicely. Workforce Solutions in the Coastal Bend likewise, both of these entities are very well managed and very well run, is doing a lot of great things in addition to assisting Coastal Bend Council of Governments with the selection process for their new executive director. As far as the livestock show goes, big fan, big supporter. And, you know, there's always a way that the community can, can participate, not only by showing up at the special sale, I encourage everybody to do so if you can't be there. There's several local buyers groups that you can reach out to and donate some money. The buyers groups usually and routinely ensure that some, ensure that all competitors at the livestock show, that get to the sale, sell their product, sell their animal for an amount of money that makes it worthwhile for them. In, in the livestock show, not only in B County, but all across the state, there's, there's a, there's a big discrepancy between the families that routinely participate in the livestock show and in those who maybe are new to it. You know, in B County, we have South Texas Children's Home, we have a lot of South Texas children home competitors at the livestock show. We have a lot of kids in the community who can really benefit, not only from the success of winning a spot at the special sale. I guess, is it special sale, premium sales? It's not, it's a special show, I'm not trying not to communicate. The sale on Saturday, all right, which is a premium sale, which means all proceeds for every item less 10%, which are held back by the board, actually go to the child. The B County Livestock and Homemaker Show is the single most impactful charitable event in B County year over year. Last year, community members and companies from both within and without, or outside of the county donated, in effect, when they went to the auction, they bought animals. It's premium sale, you don't actually get the animal. So in, on the flip side, it's premium sale, you don't actually have to take possession of the animal if you win the auction. They raised over $700,000 for kids in our community. This year's a little bit late, but that's a big number. And if there's any parents that are watching, if there's any parents in the, in the audience who are wondering, what is the livestock show? You know, how can I get involved? How could I have my child participate, raise an animal, learn something about animal husbandry, about agriculture, about business, about self-reliance, about obligations, responsibilities, duties, and a job, and also the sweet, sweet taste of victory? It should come out this week, just like so many of the commissioners mentioned, to come out to the Expo Center, take a look around. It's a lot of fun on Thursdays and Fridays, that's when all of the animals are present, all of the kids that are competing are out. Most of our schools let the children out during this week or when their, when their date, their competition. day, their competition day actually happens. And it's just a lot of fun. It's definitely very rural and that's great too for a lot of our folks who maybe live in the city and don't get out into the country very much. We live in a rural community, we live in a rural part of the state and the nation. And it's good, even if you aren't a farmer, you're not a rancher, to be familiar with what is actually the driving force, the primary driving force behind the industry that keeps B County in flow. So please consider going out. It's not going to be wet all week. I think the first part of the week is going to be a little bit wet, but by the time the kids start competing, the weather should be pretty nice. And again, if you can come out on Saturday and spend some money, kids really, really appreciate that. Thank you all very much. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Six, public comment. Are there any members in the public who wish to address Commissioners Court? Now is your opportunity. I have one hand in the bag. Chief Deputy Ronnie Jones, you have the floor, sir.
Well, we always hear about Commissioner working so hard, but actually I haven't seen it the other day. Commissioner Oliveris showed up in a nightmarish scene. He didn't explain it, and he shouldn't, that it's an emergency, all hands on deck, everybody's going crazy, and it's a bad thing. He shows up, gets out, puts his vest on, he gets to work. We made sure he didn't give up, we did a great job, and we helped us one. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Chief Deputy. Thank you, Commissioner Oliveris, for your assistance. Anybody else would like to address Commissioners Court? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or county judge.
Would you approve the comment?
I have a motion and I have a second. Commissioner Fidesias, Commissioner Dewitt, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Looking down at the Department of Reports, the Human Resources Comp Time Report. Just looking over the report, looks like everybody's doing a really good job of getting that comp time to zero, near zero. I only see one, it's a little over 100 hours. That'll come up a little later in another agenda item. I want to appreciate everybody working on that comp time. When times are slow, it's time to take that comp time and get it off the books. And I applaud all these people.
Excellent, thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Moving on, Agenda Item, or I'm sorry, moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda Item Number Eight is going to be, I'm going to move Agenda Item Number Eight a little bit later into the agenda. Hopefully, the presenter is, had a last-minute conflict come up that he's going to get over here just as quickly as he can, so stay tuned. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, approved Real Inc. Potential Facility Assessment Technical Memorandum Number Three, Cyberview, and Technical Memorandum Number Four, Construction Cost and Timeline Estimates. We don't have any motion right now, but I would like to turn the floor over to Real. If you'd please identify yourselves for the record. So good to see you, Mr. Oliveris.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Martin Ornelas, and I represent the Rural Economic Assistance League. We're headquartered out of Alice, and we operate public transportation services in nine counties, one of which is here in B County, where we have one of our current facilities. We also have facilities in Cintin, Palculias, and we're working on a facility in Rockland. I'm here to discuss a technical memorandum, three and four, which I understand the court has ordered received and hopefully you've had a chance to review. But I want to give you a brief background of how we got to where we are. And for the record, Judge, I want to thank Commissioners Elias and Dewitt for their tremendous assistance in the field observations we went to go do on looking at sites. Thank you for your participation. I think it shows in the product of what we have in the current reports, so I want to acknowledge that. As you know, back in 1992, the current facility that we operate out of was constructed on B County property through B Community Action Agency. As an agency of the county at the time, there were questions that one didn't think of. If there is a future separation, what happens with the assets? Well, unfortunately, a separation did happen. In 2014, Real was voted by the then Board of that governing body to absorb those services, which we did in partnership with TechStop. At that time, it was a very quick transition, and we focus on continuing the service. And we're proud to report that the services continued advancing. And B County is one of our counties within our service area that's the fastest growing in terms of new clients writing the system. We also have, this is one of the counties where the need is very high to extremely high based on what's considered a transportation index, a variable that matters, you know, based on the demographic of the population and the services that are needed. Residents in this county have one of the highest needs within our service area. We knew that there was interest in making a transition. And so for the last few years, through the leadership of Commissioner Dewitt, there's been a number of questions being asked. And that has resulted in formalizing some framework for us to get us to where we currently are. We began looking at operational needs back in 2021. In the last two years specifically, we focused on a regulatory and administrative framework to be able to do an effective transition, as well as the last one that was just created, the last report on number four. It is the construction cost and timeline estimates. So what we have before us is truly a framework to continue in this strong partnership, moving forward on how best to make this happen. I want to focus briefly on the four sites that we reviewed, and thank you again, Judge and Commissioner, for placing these four per consideration as viable options. And for the record, we looked at 101 North Jackson Street, as Site Two was 1311 East Toledo Street. Site number three was 405 South Hillside Drive, and Site number four was 401 Soft Buchanan Street. If you look at the technical memorandum, you'll see on page 14 a matrix that evaluates all the sites by the consultant procured through TechStop Technical Assistance Program. And you see, in this case, what you want to see is more green. More green means less issues. And there's only one site that there are no foreseeable issues at this time as the most viable option, and that is 405 South Hillside Drive. We at Real have analyzed this and believe that that is the direction we wish to pursue and concur with the options presented by the court. Now, we looked at all of them, and I know Commissioner Dewitt and I had other conversations about the pros and cons and how important a community is to place transit within the center of a community as it does fulfill a critical role. But at the end of the day, if we focus on the most viable, most effective transition, we believe that South Hillside meets our needs, would meet our growing demands for services, that it's the most viable option. And I would ask at the appropriate time that there be concurrence on that selection for us to be able to move forward. The other issues that come up with this transition is I would ask for the court to give authorization to continue discussions, to look at the details. What are those details to make a viable transition and within an appropriate timeline? We have a theory of how long construction of a new facility would take. We have four to six months of the architectural engineering permitting focus, and then a six to eight months of actual construction cost. So we're talking about a year and a half roughly. They've come up with some budget estimates of what it would cost. Wanted to note that in '22, the estimates were at $1.3 million for a modest facility. Now those estimates are at 1.4. So who knows what they will be in '25 or '26. But nonetheless, we do believe that it is important to note that in order for the most effective transition to take place, as the report cites, having a new facility in place is essential for a transfer or sale of the existing facility is to occur. So there must be a location that one moves to for all the regulatory and administrative issues identified for them to be able to take place in order to take place. So what I would ask is for authorization, motion, something for us to get a work group, perhaps Commissioner Elias or Commissioner Dewitt or Judge at your discretion, for us to figure out the details and come before this court with the most viable option of how best to put this into motion at this time. I know that we have made a request to TechStop for support. The total amount we requested was $990,000. That includes both soft costs and hard costs. We're looking at not the top end of the budget, but a more moderate amount in between. We see our responsibility as continuing to provide the high-quality service that residents in B County should expect every time they board one of our vehicles. But we also know that we have a duty and an obligation to continue growing the service. We just need a solid, modest landing spot, and from there, we will continue making the system grow. Years before, we had planned on reinvesting some of our resources in our strategic capital projects. However, because of the conditions of the lease and all those questions, we weren't able to do that. We do believe in the future, we will be able to do that once we continue this transition and land into a modest facility, which we believe that together we could all construct to be able to move forward. So at this point, I would ask for, again, concurrence on the South Hillside facility site, and then a work room for us to figure out the details, how to make this transition more.
Thank you, Mr. Ornelas. Is there any questions, any Commissioners out?
I have a couple things.
Yes, sir.
For the record, what we found out when I did the open records request is that B County owns the land. And the facility was put on B County land without the land ever being transferred. So that's what created the situation where you don't want to upgrade a facility because you don't own the land, it's on. And that's why we're looking at this. And I have a question. You mentioned that the cost was estimated at 1.4 million, but you're only asking for 900,000? I don't understand.
We believe that in order for us to make an effective transition, we want to look at a modest entry point, not at a high end, develop part of the parcel immediately for us to move in, and then we would take responsibility for further development of the entire site. So we believe it's in our interest also to get a clean start, to continue our growth that we see happening in the county. To do so, we need to have a moderate entry point on terms of the price. That's why we went with a middle of the road.
Where are you in the transaction with TechStop? At what stage?
Oh, the proposal was just submitted. It was just due on this past Friday, and it was submitted. So it would be time. Again, it's a competitive process. We don't know what will happen. We certainly hope a positive outcome at the level we requested. Then we believe that we would be in a much better position months from now to begin that process. We know, once we are notified of where we're going to have assets to construct, then we can begin some of the preliminary work, some of the procurement of the architectural and engineering, which are some of our soft costs, so that we can move this as fast as possible. But without construction dollars, we can't, we're at a standstill.
Is this the only project in your district that you're trying to get money for?
Oh, no. We have another, our primary facility in Alice, is constructed, is being constructed as we speak, not the actual construction, but we currently are with funding available, about to release our construction documents. That one is a $25 million facility.
Quick question. When you said this is a competitive process, could you help me understand what is meant by that?
That means every transit district and nonprofits have the ability to compete for the dollars that come up every two years. It's called coordinated call. We put our best foot forward, and for the record, my apologies, I forgot to introduce the staff that works with me, Pam Agasa, who manages mobility management services for us to ensure that residents that need to enter the system of transportation enter effectively, and Melanie Gomes, who is a program assistant who works side by side with me on these projects and our duties.
Thank you all for being here. Please go ahead.
Kind of the second question is that, you know, understanding, and Commissioner, thanks for the valuable knowledge that you provided here when we went through, walked through. It's very helpful, helped me come up with learning very quickly. So right now, this is just primarily a memorandum, understanding so we kind of move forward. Do you foresee any dollars that's going to be required by the county on the county's behalf or not at this time?
I would hope that once we look at the entire picture, the details could be figured out between the county, Real, and the state, that it is possible that at some point, there may be a contribution financially for construction. Or in kind, in lieu of construction. And we can think generically right now, for example, one of the typically in construction costs, one of the bigger costs is site preparation. Those might be aspects that the county may be able to do that still have a dollar amount and not be cash out of pocket. I know that, other than the construction sake, right, some of the transfer of the land, right, our position is very clear. We never want to put anyone in that or in this Commissioners Court in the same predicament in the future. That we want to avoid. So we want to have a very clean transfer of land for us to continue moving forward in sustaining and building upon the work done for the transit facility. But it is possible in the future, once we get the details of a financial contribution, that we would ask for the accounting.
So if you had to make a swag as far as order magnitude in dollars, what do you think that might be?
I am on the spot. I will, you know, if you ask me how much will I need, well, I need, in the big picture, now it's gone to 1.4 million, right? If I don't get 1.4 million from the county, I'll set up for whatever the county else
Any other questions, Commissioner?
No.
Commissioner Fidesias, you have the question.
How much, how much of this is pending or pending or hanging on TechStop coming up at 990,000?
Oh, it's all pending on that.
All of it? You're paying all of it?
Short of the county being in an amazing financial position and saying, we're willing to contribute these costs, we do not have the finances to enter into a construction discussion at this point.
Correct. No other grants are going to be pursued other than TechStop or?
We will pursue all other possible options as we do in every one of our projects. So there is possibilities in the future, but nothing concrete yet. Our focus thus far has been on these technical memorandums, what's the regulatory and legal framework for us to be able to transfer an existing asset that's being used for transit into a non-transit use, which is the framework that we receive. But there are always other options for us to pursue. Once we, as we do in our internal plan, we look at grants that we get, and based on the needs in our entire service area, we begin our allocation of resources in terms of capital approvals. We are a political subdivision, so we're not a taxing authority, so we're limited to grants that we primarily get from the federal government, from the state. However, there are some contracts we establish, there's some other ways that we generate revenue, including the sale of ads on our buses and the like, to be able to reinvest back into transit. So we would pursue all options. If there are other community foundations that support transit brick and mortar, we would certainly approach those. Any leads that you may have, we would certainly welcome that to be able to do that.
Are you duplicating any of the building, like engineering or anything like that? Because a shovel-ready plan going forward on a grant stands a much better chance than, oh, I'm going to do this, but I don't have it ready yet.
With that framework in mind, Commissioner, is where we look at the amount that we're looking at a building. We're looking at ways to reduce costs. Prefabrication is always more viable. We certainly don't want to enter into, we want this to be part of the pride of B County, and so we're looking at a modest, appropriate entry facility that we can build upon. How best to reduce costs, we're open to all options in being able to do so. We just know tightness of the essence in that we've been working on this for years. We've gotten to a good place where we believe that now we are all aligned, that this is the best path. the best path. Now is up to us to figure out how to get there. And we're all, we're all in this together, and we're committed to making this work, Commissioner and Judge and the rest of the court. Now we have the details to figure out, and the details do involve financial considerations. I think that's where we can do more work before we come with a court with an actual figure, if there is one. Because again, like I said, there might be other ways, other ways to reduce costs and still get a facility that is appropriate for us to continue operating and service. But this court would also take great pride in knowing the facility, if they were part of this transition to move forward.
Anything further?
No.
Commissioner, do it.
Craig, come on. We're going to deed over about $400,000 worth of land to, yeah. We don't get any credit for that? And now you want a financial contribution on top of that?
Absolutely, yes. I believe the value of the land is absolutely important and critical. According to the appraisal district, the market value is 275,380. Or the price, at some point, it's adjusted, and I'm not sure how to read this, 326. So I'm very much aware, Commissioner, that there is value to the land. However, the value to the land does not impact construction costs. It would impact operating service in the future, but not construction costs.
Well, you and I had this conversation on the phone. We don't have to do any of this. We think it's a good idea, we want to pursue it. But we don't have to do any of this, and I, Craig and I, we don't have an extra half a million dollars that we can throw at this project. Just throw it on out there right now. We don't have it. Unless there's some 409 money or SS money.
Any accounts?
No, account, we're not aware. No, no, I understand, Commissioner. We're all in situations that none of our doing, as it was none of your doing, that we're in. I absolutely understand. I just believe that we've gone further along more than ever before in a positive way than now the details are up to us.
Well, and if it were my land, and I'm in charge of this whole thing, there is no way I would deed that land to you without knowing it's going to be used for that. And if it says, well, we got a half million to do it, we've already deeded the land, that's not a good deal because that's no longer ours. So there would be a lot of contingencies involved, and we don't have the money.
Correct.
Because the facility that you have now, I understand, we want that facility. It's on our land. To build something on somebody else's land was not wise, it was probably, anyway, we needed to hit it here and there.
And those decisions were not made by us nor by you.
It was a long time ago. But you're able to perform the service now out of that facility, but it'll be enhanced with a new facility. But if the county can't afford it, there are a lot of other things we need to do, that half a million dollars for the county besides the transit system.
And certainly, as I said earlier, years back, we, through our internal growth, began the plan to invest resources that we were directing to this facility. However, we were unable to do so because of the current status of those that are no longer at the table, right? And so we've inherited a dilemma. I believe that with the continued goodwill, we can find a solution to keep moving in the path that we're moving, which is a very positive, clear understanding, solid framework on how to make this happen.
Now, your grant application, I understand, we, all of us in this room have probably done grants, so the boxes have to be checked. Does there have to be a box check that you're expecting the financial contribution from the county?
There's no such box that needs to be checked.
Okay, so that's something that would come up later. You would be awarded the grant, and then that would come up? Is that what we're saying?
No. We need to come up with a framework of the amount of money we have to begin constructing, and then we connect that to what the actual construction needs are, and then the dollars start coming together, how that will become reality.
Are you asking, I'm sorry, don't interrupt you, Mr. Renalas. Are you, are we having a chicken-egg discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, does that make sense? So is the, is the, we get serious about this when TextDOT says, okay, we're going to award the grant, or we get serious about it and make commitments, and then TextDOT may award the grant?
Exactly.
I guess that's the, that's the...
That's the question.
There's simultaneous processes taking place, right? I don't know what the outcome of that request is with TextDOT, and I certainly cannot speak for that. All I can speak to is, our plan is to continue moving forward. We believe we have a framework. We believe that there are other key partners in that framework, and that's the role that the county plays. And there is also the clear understanding that there is the need, the requirement for this to move forward. There must be a facility to which we move to for then, to then trigger everything else that happens. How we build this, I believe, is where we're at.
Can I jump in?
Please.
Oh. And I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow what you're saying. If we put it in the context of, and you do, you have to continue to operate out of your existing facility until you have your new facility. TextDOT is, is, do you have an understanding that TextDOT is going to make a decision to award or not award this grant? That they're not going to make that decision until you're able to relocate? Or is TextDOT willing to consider the grant while you remain operation, while you retain operations in your existing facility, which TextDOT has an interest in? Does that make sense?
Yes, and I have no, I cannot speak for TextDOT of what their intentions are. What I can tell you is what the report found, and that's a quote that I cited exclusively from the report in one of the conclusion documents, is, "The new facility in place is essential for the transfer to take place."
Is the, is the new facility being in place essential to TextDOT awarding the 900,000 grant?
The, the decision from them must be made for us to begin the process to get to the new facility.
So TextDOT will be making a funding decision prior to Real having to relocate?
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely. We can't move to a new home without having the money to buy the home or construct the home in this area.
The reason why I'm asking is, is if, if the, if the TextDOT grant has to come after you have the new facility partially done, then the creative process that we're discussing, the discussion and the details is going to be front-loaded for costs that Real's either going to have to find somewhere, or the county is going to have to come up with. And like Commissioner DeWitt said, if we can't get off the ground on that, then that's an issue out of the, out of the box. But it doesn't sound like that's the case, so that's good.
No, I think the good news is that the, there is no easy path to align all timelines effectively, right? The commissioner's court has its timeline, TextDOT has its timeline, and we have our timeline within this framework. If a positive outcome on the land comes out of here, any positive step forward will always be viewed as such. It's a positive step forward.
So in other words, okay...
Is that the decision-maker? That I, I cannot speculate.
Let's say, let's say, we say, okay, we all agree, let's go forward with the land. We haven't done any paperwork, no deeds, and then we want to go forward. What if then, when it comes down to it, okay, they accepted it, we got it, and we say, and we have no money to contribute? What happens then?
Those are hypotheticals that I hope we don't get into. What I can tell you is with that...
Is it going to be that we do or we don't?
Well, we don't know what's going to happen between here and then. We don't know if any private foundation we may approach might be in a position to contribute towards making that happen. Construction is one of the most challenging areas in that rarely, if ever, you have all the money upfront to construct, right? You go through a process of planning of how the facility should look like, what are the costs associated to that. Then you go through an estimator process that's going to give you a sticker shot that's going to wrangle you more than you wish. Then you go through a value engineering, which reduces the cost, and you go through this whole process simultaneously. Do we need all money upfront to begin constructing? We need as most as we can because then decisions need to take place. But I think if the first and most important step is, is the land is going to be made available, we can work on those details. I believe our position is clear. I don't want to be in this, well, I don't know if it'll ever be me again, or someone else in this position, because that's not the intent. I think we're in a good place and to keep moving forward.
Let me, let me ask you this. Is there a commitment? Is there a request that you're, are you asking commissioner's court to indicate a commitment that if details can be worked out and we get a comfort level in the future, that we will come up with some form of a conveyance to Real of this real property? Or is conveyance of the property to Real one of, is that step one?
I believe that would be step one. I believe that after that, then...
Then we form a committee?
Then we form a committee, so how do we figure this out? And I came up with the example, you know, site preparation, right? I don't know the full capacity of the county. You know that more than I. I just know that if we were doing a brand-new construction on our own, I can tell you for our other facility, it's almost $3 million in site preparation, right? There is a cost to that. If it is done by a county, at its cost, there may be planning dollars, there may be other resources that I'm not aware of, but the cost must be spent.
So, so are you asking the court to consider making a motion and approving a motion to convey the, this tract of land to Real today? Is that what you're requesting? Because when you're giving your, and I wrote down, I thought, I thought there was a requested, but you know, that you're requesting that we agree with the preferred site location of 405 South Hillside Drive, and that we want to continue discussing this process, and that we create a committee, or that we authorize the creation of a committee and appoint a couple commissioners to that committee, and then Real and TextDOT or whoever else. So I think I misunderstood from the very beginning, really, what your request is, is today, B County vote on conveying 405 South Hillside Drive to us today? Am I wrong now?
Yes.
Okay, good.
What I was asking is exactly...
So it's going to be a judge what you captured.
I think as the discussion continued, will that be a requirement in the future?
So you're looking for guidance, not for ultimate decisions?
Correct.
Okay. You made me feel much better right now. Okay, thank you. Commissioner, but yes, yes.
Couldn't there be a, like a letter of intent?
I don't know that it's necessary. If it's necessary for, if it's necessary for a grant application, I mean, I, I think the concern that we have is, one, the dollar figure is one that I don't think we were really considering initially, given the land conveyance. And two, that we're trying to, trying to understand, how does it really relate to the process? Because I think, at least, and I'll just speak for myself, my thought process was that this, is that this, these, the grant would be awarded, the land would be conveyed, the construction would commence, and Real would have a new facility. And, and so I think what, what I'm trying to wrap my mind around is, is that even plausible at this stage? Or is the likely pathway going to be, figure out what the plan of attack is, we're waiting on TextDOT to award the grant funds, we convey the land, we find funds to begin construction in a meaningful manner that allows you to start relocating your facility over to the new facility? And if and when TextDOT approves the grant, then we can complete the build-out. Is that what, is that what Real is thinking the process is going to be, or is it different?
I think the latter process, the way you explain it, is probably, most likely, the most viable scenario. Again, we don't have definitives, and we're not going to have that for months.
Right.
I think the acceptance of the site and the interest in continuing and concurring with our decision to select that site is only a positive, right? I've alerted TextDOT, this meeting, the agenda of this meeting was included in the proposal. This is being discussed. It's not in effect. And so I think that the timeline and the process is new to us all, but we're creating it as we go along, I guess.
Thank you. And just for commissioner's court discussion, I, I don't know much about how this is going to look ultimately. The big elephant in the room is, we don't have any budgeted funds this fiscal year for this project that I'm aware of at all. But without continuing on, as long as there's no actual, how do I say this the right way? I don't mind committing, you know, indicating a commitment to move on with the process as far as the site goes. I do have a problem with committing any resources, any hard dollar or hard asset resources to the process at this stage. But as far as continuing on with that, I mean, it's been such a, ever since I first got on the bench, and I know before that you had had some discussions with Real that may have predated you. I, I support. I just, I'm okay with us, and I think it's important that we continue to try to figure out a solution.
There is absolutely no illusion that you had a checkbook ready to write a check.
No, no, I believe that...
I believe that the process that this court must undertake in its budgeting and planning, it's a very different timeline than that of TextDOT. And I think that for us, we truly are in the best position ever, and these discussions moving forward.
Craig, come on. All you wanted from us today is to say, we all agree, that looks like a good site, go forward.
And let us create a committee to figure out details, moving forward.
That's it.
But that's it.
I'll make that into a motion, good. We agree that's a good site, we agree with your selection, and we agree that a committee should be formed to work with you as the process goes along.
I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
One last question.
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner.
What's the deadline date for returning for the TextDOT grant?
It was submitted on last Friday.
Oh.
The 19th.
Perfect.
It's already done.
Awesome.
It's in the works. Again, all timelines don't work, I'll...
No, no, I understand.
Finalize the starts the best I can.
So the motion, motion to, can I say it again?
You did a good job. To, for us to say, we agree with you on the selection of the site, commissioner's court goes, and to form a committee to work with you as this moves forward.
And would you consider amending your motion to appoint yourself and Commissioner Oliver to that committee?
And my motion would also include that Commissioner Oliver is feeling that, though. And not that...
Well, try.
On some sake, maybe.
Okay, I've been amended motion over the minute second.
I've amended second.
Oh, thank you, gentlemen, for your dedication to the county.
We've been bowled to.
Any further discussion? Mr. Renalas, thank you for your time. And to your team, we've, I know, we haven't seen you on about eight months, six, eight months. It's been a while since you last came in. I know you all have been working a lot on this project, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. I know that the constituents in the community of B County and the surrounding counties will benefit greatly if we can figure out a solution here. So thank you for your continued efforts, and we look forward to continuing to work with Real in the future. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Judge. Just be aware that during this recent freeze, we worked very effectively with all dialysis facilities. For those that needed essential services, they were able to accommodate and move everything around. Services were minimally impacted, we did that effectively. With the exception of our facility, there's two leaks, so we're in the process of repairing that today. So the service went well, the facility, the two leaks that happened, so-
If you need any plumbing, you go to the-
There we go. I'll see you all around the facility in a few minutes.
I want to first and thank you for putting this together and thank your staff for coming and support and resources in case they're needed, so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Senator Gray.
Yeah, and just one last thing. I don't know how many individuals here that are watching online have ever had the need to try to reach out to Real, but the process is very simple, they're incredibly responsive, they will work with you no matter where you are in the county, if you need transportation or doctor's appointment, some other need or want. All you have to do is call Real and they'll work with you, they'll get you on schedule and they'll get you picked up and dropped off.
To go to class, to college. To go to class, your car breaks down and we'll be starting a new service after July of this year. Our service hours are going to extend, currently they're from eight to five, now they're going to extend from five in the morning to eight P.M. So for much more commuters, we'll be able to support dialysis, earlier shifts, going to school, have a surgery in Corpus, we can take you, a lot more flexibility. And that comes with growth and planning, and so we're very happy to be able to provide that.
Can you, for the people in the audience, give the phone number that they can call?
Absolutely, three-six-one-six-six-eight-three-one-fifty-eight.
If you're interested.
And if you have any particular concerns, who picks me up, questions that a reservation specialist may not be able to answer, you can have them call Mobility Management Services, Pam Gassar. She's here, the manager that oversees that, and she'll be happy to assist you, go with you on the first trip, do travel training. If you're technically savvy, we have a mobile app where you can make your reservation on the phone, know where the bus is, and all kinds of things. So absolutely, we're here, sir.
Do we have a link on our website to Real Transportation?
I don't think so.
Is that something you do with other counties?
Absolutely. I'll have Pam follow up with the right staff and be able to do that.
Awesome.
Again, thank you so much for your time this morning.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right, we're going to move back up to Agenda Item Number Eight. Presentation regarding V-ville Independent School District's interest in utilizing B County property at the old jail located on Toledo Street for their business office, given by Daryl Martin. Daryl Martin is one, or, go ahead.
No, I'm not going to be for the school district, please. Don't preface it that way.
You're not speaking for the school district?
No, I'm just speaking, I guess, for our councilman, but really just as a taxpayer in V-ville. We've got two schools that were built in the fifties that, you know, we had to cancel school or whatever because it was too cold, because there's no heat in the bathrooms for those kids in this corridor school. So I know we need to address that, but, so, when we were working on a different project, I passed by the old jail and I said, you know, what if the school district and the city and-
Commissioner.
Could work together and salvage, you know, this building that was built in the eighties? So my thing with it was if we also were trying to build a new subdivision in V-ville where we take Thomas Jefferson down, but we have that bus barn in it. So the bus barn occupies about eleven home sites, and the size that, I mean, if you were near the V-ville, would you want to buy a home next to this huge eyesore that at six in the morning and all these diesel buses are starting up in the morning? It's not only a eyesore, but it's also just the noise, and I'm sure the residents there, I'm sure would love for it to be moved. But the fact that if we weren't able to move that, it opens up eleven more home sites, which, you know, the school district would get the bulk of this tax out, we're talking over a hundred grand a year once everything's fully developed. The city, I mean, so this is, you know, taxpayer dollars that are coming in for years to come. It's our first new, you know, neighborhood, we need housing in this area, and so now we're going to start a new neighborhood, but we've got, we built a ten-foot fence around it, okay, well, now it just kind of blocked the eyesore with a ten-foot fence, it still doesn't fix the problem. And so, but no one has, I know the city doesn't have the money in their budget to do it, the school district doesn't, the county doesn't, but I'm thinking if we're working together, so if the jail is the only part of the building that had foundation issues, if the county could maybe demo that part of it, you've got, if the rest of the shell of the other building is okay, then the school district would be able to house their police department and bring some administration there. You know, if the city could maybe throw in some labor work. I'm just, and again, I'm just trying to come up with some, get us all to come to the table. Because if it's a matter of, you know, the county donating this property that eventually if the city, the county, I mean, the school district does not use it for school purposes, it reverts back to the county. But I'm just trying to come up with something where we can, hey, salvage something that was built in the eighties and around eight billion plus, I guess, something to that effect. But rather than raising that whole thing, using that, I mean, if we solve a huge problem by maybe moving the bus barn, now we can develop this property, you know, which means you can not only build more expensive homes, I mean, because again, you know, it's going to dictate how much I'm willing to spend on a home if I've got to live next to the bus barn. So when I've just mentioned it in the past, the only thing I've heard is, it's going to be expensive, it's going to be expensive, and I get it, nobody's got the money. But at this point, I just think that it would be in our town, our city, our county's best interest if we could all come together and figure out a way to salvage taxpayer dollars by using this building for the benefit of the school district, but also having that space to move this bus barn and also bring their police department over there. So again, I'm speaking out of turn for them, I was just trying to get, you know, us to come together and figure out a way to make this work.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, do it. Couple things you mentioned that I wasn't aware of, I guess, on the old site, you mentioned that they had foundation issues. Do we know the extent of those foundation issues and would it have an impact to the front?
This after, after this meeting, I'll give you a copy of the report that we're basing off of. I can, a couple, a couple immediate issues. The jail and the offices are under integrated roof, so we have looked at, and doing this partial destruct, partial tear down before and it hasn't.
You know, it's had a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
It has been stripped out.
The jail's all been stripped out, but it's all still under that same roof.
Same roof.
Yeah, but go ahead.
No, that was, that was my big concern, you know, with structural foundation for the back, you know, didn't have any effect on the front.
And again, and I, you know, I hadn't gone through the whole report on the structural issues, but again, it was just trying to see if we could come together right and just figure out a way to basically use taxpayer dollars as efficiently as possible. And I said, if we could salvage that, and then, my biggest issue was trying to get rid of that bus barn and starting off with, you know, this first new home site in V-ville, I mean, done right instead of how, you know, when you listen to the kids, and that's what's so frustrating, as kids, you know, they say, well, it's V-ville and, you know, like, we're V-ville smart. Just accept, well, you know, it's V-ville, I mean, that's, we're not, we can't have what other places have, because it's V-ville. I mean, so I don't understand why we would just accept that. V-ville can't do anything, we can't do anything nice, we can't, we can't work together to try to figure out something, we can't put our egos aside to try to come up with what's best for our community. So again, I'd say that I'm the one that knows what to do to fix this, but I'm coming to some guys smarter than me to come help me figure this out, so that's why I'm here.
That's curious. What if, now, what if-
We are recording, right?
The next bond issue that the school does, they do a bond issue to demo the entire site and build a new facility on.
We need a school more than we need an administration built.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, we're, I can say, you guys need schools.
Make it part of the bond issue for the next new school.
If we still can pass a bond for a school, we're not going to pass a bond to fix that. But again, and again, I should even be speaking for the school district because I'm not part of the school district.
Let me just, yeah, and so, and I understand that, Mr. Martin, I appreciate that clarification. Have you, have you approached the school district about this at all?
I, I have.
What can you share, share with us about what they said?
And basically, you know, the only thing was, it's going to cost a lot to do it.
How much is a lot?
I don't know what a lot is, I don't have a clear number of what a lot is.
I don't even know what they have over at the bus barn, do they have a vending shop or is it just-
Well, I think there's maybe some EPA issues, you might have, it might be an underground hang.
Search things at the bus barn location?
I'm not sure if there are.
Fuel arms are there.
So they have their fuel.
Yeah, that's a fuel farm.
Great idea.
But, so anyways, I guess, just wanted to try to see if we could come together and because, no, it's not going to be an easy fix, we'll have to sit there and think about it. And even if that's not the spot to move it, even if it's, we try to move it out on county property somewhere else, something where we work out, work together to-
Where did B.I.S.D. move that building that they sold a decade or so ago, up at the, across from the-
Where the Starbucks, yeah.
It's over there on the west side, too.
Yes. Who owns that land?
I-
Did they sell the building too?
The building's not there any longer, the, the-
Fell apart?
Yeah.
Was that on Isor's land?
But even, but the city has, we have land that we could move it to, but again, we don't have the money to do it, we need a little help. I mean, however it's, my thing was, I thought it would work out where that building could be salvageable. But if we can, if we could just work together to figure out how to move the bus barn, because again, I mean, man, I'm sure everybody in that neighborhood would be thankful, those buses are starting up at three in the morning. Like I said, to start our first new neighborhood and we need the housing, I mean, it would make a huge difference to not have this, you know, monstrosity on the corner right there. So again, I guess that that's eleven more home sites, and again-
They're on the tax roll.
Yeah, it's eleven more homes on the tax roll for years to come.
Who owns the land under the bus barn? Is it the city or B.I.S.D.?
B.I.S.D.
Okay.
See, y'all have got plenty of land at some of those schools, but you don't have a building, that's the problem.
No, he's not B.I.S.D.
I know, but I thought B.I.S.D. Some of the schools have got fifteen or twenty acres, what's the one on the west side?
Ari Hall.
Ari Hall. There's a huge amount of land out there.
Yeah, but, but, okay, I'm speaking out of turn. When I was on the school board-
Okay.
That was a site to build a new school. Okay, so, but the city does have land where the old landfill, we could do it out there, we just don't have the money to do.
I got you.
So again, I'm just trying to, you know, figure out how we can come together, because nobody's going to want to foot this bill, and I don't want everybody mad at me, why Daryl out there speaking for us and it's not, no.
Do it, buddy.
You know, the old landfill is an excellent idea. We looked at that, but it's out of the way, there's not residences around it?
No, and we don't, and that's going to be used for something else, but we have a spot near that that we could do it, we just don't have the funds. So it would be, we would need some help from you guys and B.I.S.D. I'm just trying to make it public and get somebody to sit down with me and let's make this work, because I'm tired of only answering, it's going to be expensive. I get that. But when you look at the benefit of having, let's do one thing not have in V-ville, it's like, okay, well, we're going to build a new neighborhood, we got that, put a twenty-foot fence and give them earmuffs and earplugs, that's how we work in V-ville. That's all I'm saying. And I get it, I take it.
Come on now, come on now.
But, because it's just frustrating, because I'm like, come on, guys, if we sit down and work this out, we can come up with a fiscally responsible way to do it where it doesn't hurt everybody. I know we can if we work together, but I know everybody's busy, like I was, but I stopped and I just say, you know, but, you know, I just think it's that important to me, and this is not as a councilman, this is just as a, you know.
Daryl, I think what you've done, you've got, we're not the, we don't have all the ideas in the world, but you've got five people sitting up here that have a lot of ideas, that have this on their mind, have to think about it, and you never know what may pop up, seriously.
Well, that was the whole point, was that to try to get everybody to stop, put some thought into it, and let's see if we can't come, you know, come to a decision that, again, you know, everybody's got to dig in their pocket just a little bit, but, you know, we just need to think about for the future of this community, and we just need to kind of come together and make this happen. I greatly appreciate y'all's time.
One more, thank you for bringing us to the Court, you know, I'm really encouraged to hear about growth within our community, bringing that new housing. Housing is definitely something that we do need, we need to look at. Great idea that you're bringing forward. You know, to do this, I think you need to have someone, you know, leading this whole effort, putting the right people in a room that could effectively do some brainstorming, capture some weird notes, and, you know, as Commissioner's talking about, to help develop, explore all these different ideas that could be available, work the work, work it out. But it's going to take, it's going to take a workshop.
The word pops into my head is the person that I know can do.
He can take you away very, very well, he does.
His business acumen, I admire so greatly. He is a very fond of knowledge from which I, I'm here today, so I appreciate you, man.
All very true.
Thank you.
Just an FYI, the board is in the process right now of voting whether they're going to hold a bond election May the fifth.
What board?
V-ville, I see.
Oh, B.I.S.D.
You're the committee that would be smart.
Well, I know, I've been trying to make it to that, but I had a city council meeting one time, but anyway, yes.
Thank you for making your presentation today.
I appreciate it, guys, I appreciate the time, but, I mean, seriously, let's just, you know, try to sit back, think about it, and see if we can't come together, and see if we can't, and if we need a formal committee between, which we should, a formal committee between the county, the city, and the school district, and sit down and just hash it out and come up with an answer, instead of just pushing it down the road. So if you wouldn't mind, Mr.-
Do you want me to consider putting together a committee for you?
Well, I'm just-
I'll tell you what, I'll follow up with you later on today.
I will.
I know, I will.
I don't know, seriously.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who we should put, and so, I appreciate it.
Just do it informal for right now, I don't think there's any, there's no, and it should, it really shouldn't be, you know, from the county's perspective, you know, it's a B.I.S.D. issue, it's a municipal inside, middle of the city issue, so it's definitely not something that, I don't think the county needs to come in and tell B.I.S.D. and the city what they should and shouldn't do. And so I don't know that we really should be the entity that drives the vote on it, especially since B.I.S.D. is the starting point, they have to be receptive to it, but I'll follow up with you after the meeting, and I really do appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and thank you for caring enough to come up here and present it to us.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of B.I.S.D., I'm just kidding, not on behalf of B.I.S.D. We don't want to get in any trouble.
I'll take care, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Daryl.
I'll take care, man.
All right, moving on, Agenda Item Number Ten, discuss and consider action on project management and grant administration agreement between Neoces River Authority and B County, Texas for assistance on a Colonia grant application. Good morning, if you would please identify yourself, and then you may proceed.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Philip Dioptrich with Neoces River Authority, planner, working on the Colonia needs assessment currently. I'm coming to you to ask for approval on interlocal agreement for Neoces River Authority to, for grant administration and project management on Colonia grant specifically with the TDA. I'm currently working on the needs assessment on the thirty, thirty Colonias within B County, reporting to the TDA on this, and I've been in communication with the TDA on the upcoming- And I've been in communication with the TDA on the, uh, upcoming colonial grant fund. The grant is to be awarded up to one million dollars per colonial, and the, uh, we just heard that the, uh, the application is going to open up coming up in February, and it's gonna close in April for this year. And I would like to ask if, um, Nuasis River Authority could be the grant administrator for this specific grant, and then follow up and be the project manager, uh, project management for any projects that come out of that grant for this cycle. There'd be no cost upfront, we'd ask no cost upfront, um, only upon approval of the grant, uh, we'd ask for the ten percent of, um, the approved amount as payment. We, we recently hired a grant writer on staff, um, and as far as the project management, we can cover, um, all the RFQs, uh, coordination with the engineers, uh, upon the ultimate approval, of course, on the whole process, uh, but we can, being a state agency, we can communicate directly with the engineers on our behalf. So we'll take some of the load off of your plate at, uh, no cost to you.
Thank you, Mr. Dioptrich.
Would the amount be, come in, what would be paid with, uh, somebody grant administering? Grant administration?
They've already checked into that, if you will.
Yes.
They've, they've checked into the commission.
With them being a state agency, we're able to bypass the initial RFP for services for grant administration.
So we don't have, we don't have all those rules?
No, because of this, of this unique situation, the other admins do not have the same situation.
So each individual colonial will, he'll put this together and then everybody will have, um, an idea, because all of them are gonna be different.
For all the needs.
Correct. So we have another meeting with the TDA, uh, this coming, this week, and they're gonna give us more details on the applications, uh, for this cycle. They made a couple of changes to the application process, uh, we'll get those details this week. I mean, at this point, it may be one colonial per county, it may be multiple colonias per county that can apply and receive funds. We'll find out, um, very soon.
And this is a yearly, uh, application?
Yes, sir, it's ongoing every, um, yes, every year.
I, I know Philip and I talked about Pettis Water and Sewer System is facing need, and this would be ideal for them. So Judge, if you were out making motion to review this?
I have a motion to approve, and a second, any further discussion? Thank you for your presentation this morning, Mr. Dioptrich, uh, if there's nothing further, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you again, Philip, for your presentation, your time in the Nuasis River Authority's efforts on behalf of, uh, E County.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, I'm very grateful. Okay, um, agenda item number eleven, approved emergency management request for partial comp time payout for deputy emergency manager tabled during the December eleventh, twenty twenty-three regular term meeting, before I open up the, the floor for anything, I just have a couple preparatory questions. Are, are we ready to proceed on this, HR, audit office, Mr. Garza?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
Sure.
We had directed at the last court meeting that they get with HR and work this out, have y'all gotten with HR?
I did speak to HR. Ryan did, uh, obviously, not sure what the four or after this meeting, but it's more on clarification of the policy.
Okay.
But not a resolution or solution.
What we asked to do was come to you and, and review the hours and make sure it was all like it should be, because we've got hours going to, back to May of twenty-three. And it, it, I have a real problem, that's almost nine months, and a person can't take a hundred and eight hours, a hundred hours of comp time, there's something not right. Over eight months.
I, I wasn't asked to pull any time sheets or review anything.
That's what we'd asked them to do, was to get with you and look at the time sheets and make sure it was all like it was supposed to be, because, correct me if I'm wrong, let me ask you a question. What time does he go to work?
It varies, but typically by seven forty.
Okay, where does he go to work from? Does he check in on the radio, consider that going to work?
On his drive to work, yes, sir.
So he's going to work from the house when he leaves the house?
Yes, sir.
When does he check out? When he gets back home?
When he getting back to the house?
He's not a law enforcement officer, is he?
Yes, sir.
Judge, I still have a problem with this. I mean, I can clock in ten-eight at my house at seven-thirty, and I don't go off duty till I get back to the house. Most people have to be at the office, at least on site, before they go to work.
There's just a, what, what I have to add, if I, if I could, is that there's just some policy. Now, could there be, you know, could there be policy direction going forward on this type of issue? For sure, um, because this is just kinda being brought, you know, brought into, you know, brought into, being looked at like it is. Um, so that would be, because there is no policy, and tha, and that's why there's this breaking down of, you know, of what to go forward with, because we didn't have backup.
Well, but I've got, I've got a hundred hours of comp time that I could take over the last nine months, I haven't done it. And that's why I brought up the comp time a while ago, most of those are zeroed out, they got six hours, eight hours, but this one continues on.
And HR had, yeah.
Um, there, there are FLSA rules in regards to when times starts, uh, in regards to coming to work, clocking in, and then going from there or from home, and I think you kind of, on it in regards to, law enforcement has different rules than anybody else that falls under the FLSA guidelines, but I believe there's, there's print writing in there that, that mentions about time actually starting when you, at work, or your first location, um, when you get there. Now, I know it, it, it changes, because sometimes we give individuals these vehicles, uh, when they're on call, so again, all, all this, we have to look at a little bit deeper, but there is something in there in regards to when a time starts, uh, according to FLSA.
Sure, you're gonna have IRS for those other times, like, coming in, coming in at that, that, you know, location.
But it'd be something we have to look at a little bit closer to.
And I know, I know he responds, does he not, to fire call?
We respond to any emergency that we, we deem that we are going to be needed at.
Okay.
For example, the, the accident this past weekend, excuse me, the accident this past weekend, there was a multiple fatality. We responded from there, we left from our houses, our vehicles are at home. I just, I think that we're, I don't see us doing anything wrong, we're not gonna do anything to, to jeopardize our jobs, number one, or violate any law. We do answer a lot of calls outside of our normal eight-to-five hour, we're not a normal office staff, we're not. I mean, last night, twelve-thirty last night, I got a call from the sheriff's office, an accident on one eighty-one south, oil, I mean, uh, fuel leaking out of the truck. I mean, there's, it's not just because we don't go to lunch, or we come in early, or we leave from the house. The way I look at it is if he's getting into a county vehicle from his house, he's on the clock, because if he gets into an accident and that county vehicle on the way to work, he has to be on the clock, because then we open up to liabilities. Well, why was he driving a county vehicle that's not on the clock? That's, that's the way I look at it. That's my only, my only thing. It's just like a deputy, a deputy goes to eat lunch, if they get a call during their lunch, they leave. If we get a call and we just tell them, hold on, we'll respond after our hour lunch, it's not feasible all the time. I just think that because we don't have a law enforcement agency written on our vehicle, that we're just kinda pushed to the side, and that's just how I feel personally.
I think a key driver here, and I think, Madam Attorney, thanks for bringing that up, is by not having a script of policy on how time, uh, comp time is being handled makes it a little bit of a challenge. Um, I've dealt with it before, um, you know, previous work that I did with comp time, it can be manipulated in various different ways. You know, the individuals are deserving of comp time because of the actual work, but it's also incumbent upon them to make every effort to try and take that comp time in some reasonable time. And then unfortunately, in the work environment that we're in, sometimes, I don't know what's happened with me, you know, having eight weeks of vacation, plus coming in, plus every other Friday off, you gotta try and manage some of that time off, but.
It sounds nice.
It was.
Sounds like it's a bad problem.
I believe you retired, but, yeah, that was back at work. But anyhow, so, so the key thing is that individual needs to make an effort to try and take that time, but because, you know, other, other emergencies and other needs within the community needs a support, so that time never gets freed up, because it's going from one five five to the other. And then because we have no policy in place, it's hard to say, okay, you need to take all your time by the end of the year, or you're gonna lose it in the store. Or, you know, is there some sort of a justification to pay this out, and I don't know what the policy is.
So just to, just to clarify, EP County does not have a comp time payout policy, we don't pay, do we?
Yes, sir, we, we have a very clear policy in regards to how we pay out comp time.
But it doesn't include an obligation that if comp time accumulates, that we pay it out, right?
No, the only obligation is when we hit that legal part that.
They have to take.
They have to, uh, we, put it this way, we have to pay them after they hit a certain number, they have to be paid out, it can't be comp time. In other words, they can max out their comp time, and at that point, if we allow them to go and pull that, if they get more comp time after that, we have to pay it, because we can no longer fall into this, what the government is saying, we can allow employees to have more comp time, which is why the policy was put in place a long time ago to keep this down. And we do have three methods that can be used by the department heads or elected officials to keep that comp time in check, and one of it's allowing them, you know, have to come to work, you know, a little bit later, give them more time within the pay week, or we can, uh, allow them a different, uh, different times off. There, there's stuff in there, the, the last resort, which is in our policy, it's very clear that it even says this would be kinda like the last resort, is the payout. But there's three things that actually can be done, the payout is the, is the last resort, which if we don't do anything, will have to be when they hit a certain number, but he's not close to that number yet.
Yeah, that's, excuse me, see, that's, that's where I'm coming from, he's not there, and if we, whatever we do, we have to do for every department. And if we say, well, we're gonna go ahead and pay out a hundred hours of comp time over here, what's to stop Mr. Smith from coming to report to court and say, okay, now I got a hundred hours of comp time, I wanna be paid out too? That's where I'm coming, we have to be consistent.
Yeah, and we've done, I mean, we have done it, you know, we have slid down that slippery slope a little bit in the last twelve months, um, and you and I talked about this, and it's not on points, it's not really the discussion, but, you know, when we start talking about comp time payout, my understanding, my historical understanding of the county's concept was, look, we, we, overtime isn't workable fiscally for us, we have to come up with a different solution that, that, that we can manage, uh, this issue. E County, you know, our time sheets are, are done by hand, you know, um, and, uh, and I don't know if that, if we are going to continue to slide down this, this slope of paying out when comp time, uh, gets up a, a certain amount, um, that's an incentivized, uh, program for, uh, we're incentivizing our employees to increase that comp time, and the concept of comp time is to decrease overtime, right? So by paying out comp time, we're frustrating the entire purpose of the existence of the comp time policy. If we're going to get back into that, then folks, I, I feel very, very strongly that we need to have a, uh, a check-in and check-out system. That if, if we, if our employees are going to have that, and, and justifiably so, if, if we are moving away from the comp time system, or if it's a hybrid comp time system, then when our employees check in and check out of work, needs to be recorded in a, in a, in, in a manner that is above reproach and above where we're at right now, which, Mr. Garza, yeah, I don't think anybody, you know, is in, and I, I hate having discussions like this, because it has nothing to do with you or your staff or the job that y'all do, because y'all are awesome, you guys are great. Your commitment to the community, to the county, uh, for the, for the salaries that you guys earn, the, the, the level of commitment that you have, not only as county employees, but as volunteer firefighters, you guys are always there, and you guys always stand up, and I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate and how comfortable I feel living in a county that has an emergency management team like your team does. But when we start talking about comp time payout, we have to put a different hat on, and, and I, that's the difficult situation that we find ourselves in, and that's what Commissioner DeWitt i- is, is, is addressing here. Um, and I, I, as I sit right now, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I'm not hearing any new information that, that gives me any additional guidance. I would love to know why a hundred and five hours didn't, why you were not able to have them work down that comp time since July of last year, because I know you guys are busy, usually when we're all at home watching TV or relaxing or sleeping, um, but, uh, but I, I, I don't know what efforts were undertaken to, to have them take off, you know, every other Friday or every other Thursday. There are definitely days when nothing is going on, thank goodness, uh, in, in, in our county. Um, the issue of when does your workday start, does it start when you get in your vehicle at your driveway, or does it start when you walk into your office and turn on your computer or at some point in time, in, in the two of those? And what period of time is this comp time payout request, what, what component, a period of time is for that? Is for that, is it ten minute, is it a ten-minute drive twice a day, twenty minutes a day, five days a week, times eight months? Um, I, I don't know, so a little bit more, uh, specific information, I think, would be useful in justifying the, the comp time payout request, because what y'all do is akin to how law enforcement operates, but you are not law enforcement, so you, you were in a difficult situation, right, uh, that, that Commissioner DeWitt identified, in that there are different rules apply, although usually, you know, you're generally in practice in, in the way you guys operate, it's much more akin to how law enforcement operates, and, and I think we should be able to identify the different components of the top, uh, comp time payout request in those different buckets, so we can look at them and we can justify, I'm not paying, I'm not going to consider the county clerk's comp time payout request, but I can consider your comp time payout request because it is unique and, and differentiated and specific. That's kinda how I feel about it, uh, but I, I don't speak for Commissioners for so, if y'all disagree, that's great, I know you've had a question, right?
No, it was once a question, is it was, and Ryan's already stated that they are not an eight-to-five office, that they're all used up before or afterwards, so I was just making that a point, but he's already done it.
And, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, there are a lot of, um, areas where you're not on an eight-to-five drive, and Judge, I need to make an apology here to the court. Um, who knows from me, you know, if I, if I fail or do something wrong, uh, I'm gonna admit and take on that accountability. I have not had the opportunity to review the details of our comp policy and take a little, a little look at that, so I, I failed on doing my homework and coming to the court prepared for that. However, because of the knowledge that I've had in the past, I feel like you still add a lot of value to that area there. One of the things that you mentioned, I think it's a key piece on the justification for these hours needs to be brought to the court a lot earlier, so we can at least have an understanding, or some rationale could be done by yourself to say, yes, I can approve this, because we had an unfortunate event, we had weather, we had, you know, there's just a number of things, but at least we're not waiting to the ninth hour, where we've got all these hours accumulated, and then we're trying to make a hard decision. And the decisions have a huge impact, not only just to those individuals, but also to the other individuals within the county. So it's much broader than just saying, okay, this is what we're gonna do for one person. Good point you brought up, excellent presentation.
Any other discussion, questions? Mr. Garza, did you have anything else you wanna present, I, I kinda jumped ahead of you, didn't, didn't give you a chance to.
Oh, yeah, that was it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Castillo?
I, I believe there can be a solution to this, it's just a matter of sitting down and looking at the details. Um, emergency management department, this isn't the only one in a county, um, a discussion with other counties maybe, then help us, uh, see how they may handle things, uh, but I really believe there's a solution for their department being as unique as it is, we need to look at it a little harder.
Can we just have them get together like we asked them to do the last time, Philip?
I, I would, I would love to entertain a motion to table, but if it's not the will of Commissioners' Court, you know.
Yeah, don't like to make a motion to table, because don't give me some time to do a little bit better homework and provide a little bit better insight here to the court. Candy, when is, not the next meeting, but the meeting following the next meeting?
We never know what kind of emergencies. Yeah, we want to make sure we have enough time.
26.
February? Is your motion to table this agenda item until February 26, Commissioners' Court?
Yes, sir. I'll try to get good with additional funding. They get with, I mean, see what they can work out and try to work out some of those hours, down hours. Good point, I mean. Good point. I'll amend my motion to include that, to give them an opportunity to try and work it out, try and understand.
Okay, so the motion is to table for two meetings and to instruct E, E M C to get with Hyman and Audit, and Auditor's Office to the extent necessary, to the extent necessary, to try to bring back meaningful detailed information.
And probably some revouching.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's, let's continue to utilize the comp time policy as it currently exists. Well, hold on. I think we do that separately.
Separately.
Yeah, and I don't think we need to, I think maybe that's something, I think that's a really good point. Let me do this first. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Further discussion from Commissioner Fedios is maybe this, we need to, the county needs to begin engaging in a meaningful review of our comp time policy. That's not before Commissioners' Court, so it's not, nothing that we're going to include in this motion or in a subsequent motion. I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I think we need to start looking at this, and maybe you and I can get together at some point in the next couple of days and, and maybe do a survey of other counties' comp time policies. And we probably just kind of internet, we'll search on, and see if maybe, maybe there's blanks that we can fill in that can make meaningful improvements in practical applications such as this. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion to table passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, for your, your input and your continued efforts. Agenda item number 12, approve amendment number two to pharmacy benefit management service agreement to the original Maxor Plus L T D Pharmacy Benefit Management Service Agreement, approved during the September 13, 2021 regular term meetings. I think this is largely housekeeping, unless somebody wants to tell us about the move to approve. Thank you. I have a motion to approve. I got a second from Commissioner Lenny. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 13, approve racial profiling report for exempt constable precinct four. That's probably my mistake. I, I misread that. When I was reviewing.
Move to approve, they were all zeros.
Yes.
These exempt from, put out forms, had put out forms sent in saying you're exempt.
Yeah, for exempt party. Yeah, I think that's a second. I've got a motion and a second. That was very quick. Good job, Commissioner Olivas. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 14, approve Texas Hopey Wood settlement agreements. There are still no settlement agreements that have been presented to Commissioners' Court recently, so we'll take no action on that item. Agenda item number 15, Hurricane Harvey Texas General Land Office GLO Community Development Block Grant C B G status and project update. Gentlemen, do we have any update?
No update.
No update. Moving on, agenda item number 16, American Rescue Plan A R P, status and projects. Commissioners, do we have any update?
No update except what our, our esteemed colleagues said earlier about the excellent.
Excellent, and great news, and hopefully we keep moving forward. Thank you. Moving on, agenda item number 17, B County Emergency Operations Center groundbreaking ceremony, 1:00 PM at the Expo Center, has been canceled. Moving on, there are no executive session items to address today. Move to agenda, agenda item number 18, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Nobody stopped recording. Keep it going. And keep the, do you need a different, do you need to stop it and start it for the next meeting? Mrs. Strata says yes. No, I'm glad you're here. Keeping us in line. Do we need to stop the recording on, nah, you're good.
Do you want us to stop YouTube broadcast?
No, we want YouTube to keep going. I don't want to cut all our YouTube years off, which camera should I look at? Thank you all for coming out electronically. Please keep coming back. All right, are we ready? Okay. Good morning, everybody. I'm going to call the special call meeting, the B County Commissioners' Court to order. Today is Monday, January 22, 2024. The time is 11:00 AM. This, the notice today of this meeting was at 10:00 AM. Our nine o'clock meeting ran a little bit long. Apologies for the delay. We are physically located at the B County Courthouse, Commissioners' Courtroom, number 110-1051, Corpus Christi Street, Bville, Texas 78102. That was agenda item number one, the call to order. Moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number two, approve order approving bond for second multi-county court law judge of B, Live Oak and McMullen Counties as per section 25.0006, subpart A of the Texas Government Code. We do have Judge Hardwick present. Judge Hardwick, thank you for being here this morning and for your patience. Congratulations, and once again, on behalf of the community and this Commissioners' Court, thank you for your willingness to serve in this capacity and for continuing to figure out additional obligations that we have to take care of in order for you to actually start executing your obligations. We do have a, Judge Hardwick has worked with our Audit Department. His bond requirement is similar to that of my bond requirement. I would recommend that the range under the statute is anywhere from $1,000 to $10,000. B County routinely issues or, or, you know, approves a $10,000 bond, and I think that is the amount that we ought to approve in this case as well. So I have a motion to, a second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Mrs. Scanlon, too, thank you to you and your team for getting this put together so quickly for us. And Judge Hardwick, you now have a, do I sign this one or does Harvey sign this one?
You're going to sign.
We'll sign this after the meeting's adjourned, so I make sure I don't sign in the wrong place. We have no.
Now, you really can't get a word.
We, we have no executive session items to discuss. Yes, this is, this is the handcuffs. No executive session items, so we move on to agenda item number three, another adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I love it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, which means we are adjourned. Thank you all for your presence and your patience here this morning, and all presenters. Pretty quick, right?
Yeah.